We'll call the meeting order and roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westergaard.
Yep.
Woltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yeah.
Stan Kim.
Here.
And Counselor Cleveland.
Here.
Participating via Skype.
Okay, consent agenda. Any additions, corrections? Everything's signed?
Yep, everything's good to go.
You have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Stan Kim.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, uh, end of consent agenda with a contract with Beestre and Kim. You're surely gonna wanna tell us something about that.
Uh, not too much, 'cause couple of items I think I'd circled on yours. These would be the only changes from the previous draft. It'd be on page five, where we added something to the scope of the Phase One improvements, and that's the relocation of the influence sampler at Lon's request. Flip to page seven. Aaron had quite a bit of discussion with Bob Beanstra about the concept of what happens with engineering fees if the construction contract goes way ba- way past its anticipated completion date. So there's a couple of things that were added in here, and I've circled them, G and H, that the engineer's gonna advise the city on any requested extension of the contract period, and that contract period being the construction contract period. So that's what's submitted by the construction contractor, and H, if the contractor does not complete the work, advise the city about the assessment of liquidated damages. There is some burden of proof somewhat about the city needing to, uh, to show some damage in order to assess those liquidated damages and how that would work out, and our engineer helps us out with that. Main changes, though, is on page nine, that whole big paragraph of Paragraph C. And again, this is about running long on construction contract period, and this is now saying that there'd be an additional ninety calendar days of engineering fees where there'd be no additional fees for that, in the event of things that are beyond the control of the contractor, whether that's weather, delays on getting equipment, that type of stuff, those type of things beyond the control of the contractor. There would be no additional engineering fees for that ninety days, after the ninety days there could be. Anything else on that, Aaron?
No, I think we made the changes, Scott, that we all talked about the last time we were here.
Yes, yeah, and there which wasn't too much, that was... Those are the changes, that's the only thing that's different from the draft we had reviewed last time.
So do they have a, for lack of a better term, a formula of what determines, you know, rain today, or, you know, is there any kind of formula that would constitute a, consider that it is a delay, you know what I'm saying? How's that?
Well, how are we gonna monitor it?
Yeah.
Well, it's probably gonna be a lot of Lon talking to Scott or vice versa about keeping track of what the delays are, whether it's weather-related or equipment or...
The reason I'm bringing this up, when we did the Main Street, that sat there for, on good days and more good days, nothing got done, and that drug that project out quite some time.
Yes.
So I guess I just don't wanna see that happen with this next bout that we're gonna, you know, and I just don't know if there's any way that we can monitor that or have a little more control of that, you know, 'cause like I said, I think at that time, we kept calling them, saying, "When are you coming back?"
Mm-hmm.
Well, they moved to another project to start out with, and that kinda put us on the back burner, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I guess where we're here, we want to keep them here, you know?
Yes, sure.
So I guess I didn't know if there was a certain way we can proceed in saying, "Okay, how much pressure can we put on?" I guess that's what I'm looking for, is some suggestions that, you know, we don't need to talk of this, but we can talk to the, to our engineer and see what his suggestions are on that. I just wanna keep that to the forefront.
So will there be a lot of digging and a lot of digging?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's so many days, I would think within a day or two, they should be moving or something.
You know, it...
Depends, I mean, but...
When we hire this contractor, you know, we'll be under contract with them, but when you get right down to it, the contractor's gonna say, "I can complete the project by the completion date that you stipulated." How he gets there is somewhat up in the air and really up to the contractor to do it, you know? So just a couple of things that would be, I think, different this time, in that we will have Lon keep much closer tabs on what's going on, including what would be a daily construction diary, and that would, at a minimum, it's what's the weather like today? You know, and then that helps us out when we can count that up later on.
And also, you know, he knows what equipment they're waiting for, and he'll be talking to them enough to know.
But the other thing that's different about a streetscape project, though, is that when we work with this contractor, the sewer plant, there's a good likelihood that they do one or two projects a year. They're not moving back and forth between them.
That's well...
It's just a different type of contract.
I just wanna, I wanna make sure they're aware, but that's all that we're...
'Cause when we sit down and open the bids that day, the contractors would be here, and we could explain to them that we've, this issue, that we're gonna monitor the weather and document it?
Sure.
Well, one thing about the streets, you might have, you know, with our weather ten miles away, seven, eight miles away, it might not have rained, you know?
I'm, I, it's, they're pretty easy ones, if it's raining, it's muddy, and it can't get things done. It's when it's there, it's nice, and nobody's around.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the concern I have, 'cause as that project drags out the longer that, that ain't making us any money, and they ain't making, and it's just completion dates, it's just important to have that.
Well, and we did expand this, um, and the engineers agreed to support us and pack us with verification of why the delay was there, because they don't wanna pay anything beyond ninety days, so they're gonna wanna monitor that as much.
As long as we have a plan in place when we start getting this thing together, that's what kinda makes sure that this is something that they stay after.
So we need a motion to accept the contract with Beestre and Kim?
Yep, if we're ready, we should approve that.
I'll make that a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Cleveland.
In this, one little side note, would there be any way that we could put a new entrance into that, so we don't have to use the other entrance, and how we could use that with our...
Yeah, there is a second entrance to the north already.
Right. There's a lane on there.
But it still crosses the same property?
Not utilized as much, but that, uh, you know, the drilling property goes clear to that bridge, I mean, it's not feasible.
Okay, alright. Just wondering.
Okay, we wanna go to the planning and design loans?
Yeah. Lots of, yeah. Uh, what, that's on, the application's on page fourteen, fifteen, very simple application for the SRF Planning and Design Loan. Now, what this would propose is that we could apply for this loan, it's $263,500 that pays for the planning and design of both phases, Phase One and Phase Two, this would request up to all of that money. This is still a drawdown, so you only take money as it's needed to pay the bills. So that does really one of two things, you're not committed to the entire amount to take the loan right away, you only take as much as needed, but then we're also not committed to anything specified in the contract with Beanstra Kim about what part of the sewer plant project we would do. So, you know, especially say we're considering things about the grit removal or the primary clarifier, those things are still up in the air, we're not completely obligated that we gotta do that. There's still plenty of time to be evaluating options before we would get into that, although this does request the entire amount of the money that we would need. The idea about this planning and design loan is that it's a zero percent loan, and then when you get your permanent financing in place for the construction, this design loan's rolled into the construction loan. So I asked them how we would do this, just at the end of the project, if we did both phases of the project, we would have two SRF loans. One would take care of the disinfection, one would take care of the other major parts of the plant improvement, but we would have two, and generally, they're, they likely would be twenty-year loans. You know, you can shorten them up if you want, which we likely wouldn't want to do for payment reasons, for the amount of the annual payments, or you can lengthen them out a little bit, but after twenty-four years, some of that goes up one percentage point, and it just really doesn't make any economic sense to extend it out any further. So think about twenty years, and what we would do with the total cost of the planning and design loan is just to say, for Phase One, that it takes fifteen percent of this amount of money to engineer Phase One. That fifteen percent would be rolled into this first SRF that we get to finance the disinfection project. Eighty-five percent then gets rolled into the bigger, the bigger one later on. So just that the notion that it's proportionate between the two loans will be our request.
What's the average rate of that now, two percent?
Two percent.
Two percent, okay.
So we just need a motion to approve the application for the SRF loan?
Yes.
I'll make that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, Bill, you wanna put us up to speed on seventy-one, one ninety-six?
We're gonna look at that map, Gus, which was a separate email file to you. Okay?
I've been meeting with the DOT engineers, and the late fall harvest pushed back the surveying to get the new right-of-ways in, and they never got that done till a couple weeks ago. And, um, in our situation, there's two grain bins at Mark Hossing's, and the line's like twenty-five feet away from the bin. Our, our rules, you can't be within the height of the bin plus eighteen foot to that bin. So I'm far enough away on that, if you look there at that green pole, I mean, the first, the first green pole by the intersection, that's over a hundred feet back, and so that's twenty foot back. So I was gonna build a new line, stop there, then I gotta go north around Mark, right south of his house, and then cross over to Bill Acorn's, and then come south. That right-of-way really isn't moving much there until you get to the very south end, where the hash marks are, and then we cross that intersection and then head east. Were we talking about one time going underground or something? Right. So the temporary line, well, temporary, well, permanent will be the green poles, and then we're gonna go north with, which are the blue poles, the blue poles will be temporary, then on Acorn's side, we'll come back with permanent poles, and then east are permanent poles. Then when they, the DOT's taken ten feet off that intersection, he asked me not to bury line there until they got done. When they complete this project, the project is, you can see on the letter, the bid lighting is in January, they'll receive, award a bid in February, and the contractor can start up anytime after that. And it's for the whole 2015 calendar year, construction season. So we might not be doing anything out there till 2016.
That's how it's gonna be out there.
And what we would do then, Mark Hossing allowed me to build that temporary line behind his house, I mean, behind his, he's got a machine shed right there with his building. So when that time comes, the state's done with that right-of-way, we'll bury from that existing, that pole I talked about before, we'll bore all the way across the highway, I'll put a pad mount in to feed those transformer, I mean, to feed those grain bins, probably feed up to Mark's, and then, um, put it on the riser pole on the east side of the road. If you guys go around the country, you'll see any FEMA lines, anywhere around bins, it's all buried, they won't even build, build it overhead by bins, which is a good thing. It is, it is. It might be done next fall, it all depends on where that contractor starts. He said the first thing the contractor probably is gonna do, if you see the yellow on the bottom left of the highway?
Okay.
They're actually widening that right-of-way, I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah.
But I'm sure, I'm sure they're gonna shut this down, and the cars will come through here like this.
Oh.
You can see, this is being exten- that's why I gotta move these poles here.
That's why, how come they're, I don't know, they're shutting, taking both the bridges out on one?
They put a turning lane there, John, or do you have any idea?
That was the first idea.
But when it's all said and done, that old curb will come out of there, and it'll be a stop sign.
It'll be a square, T.
And this road is already, you wouldn't believe how busy this road is, already. Um, I called up to SAC to see if they're, because right north of us, it's Calhoun REC, and the north of them, it's SAC REC, and I called up SAC first, 'cause I know, we work with Mitch a lot. They're not, they're moving their line themselves, so then I, so then I called up Calhoun REC, and he's also doing the same thing, and, um, but they have a FEMA contract that's finishing up on the tenth. So he gave me the contractor's number, and I called him, they're staying in SAC City, so they're already here, so there wouldn't be any mobilization. But with him, is what he say, they got like thirty guys, but they wouldn't bring thirty guys down for this. They would finish up on that job, and then like in the third, I told him, "We can't do nothing this council meeting, it'll probably have to be the next council meeting, the third Monday," and, um, he said he would start that week, if they do it.
So how long is the process, does that take, to set up the temporary right now, just to...
He told me he would do, he would do this job in a week.
In a week, okay.
Is what he told me.
I just was wondering what kinda timeframe we had underneath, uh...
Oh.
For the state, you know?
Okay, I understand you now.
Yeah, that's what...
They would like it done before they start.
How many dollars?
The contractor can start the bid, I mean, start the project right after he's awarded the bid, so that could start in February, but you know, it's all dependent upon the weather.
Sure.
So what's his cost estimate?
He's seen the situation we're under, and, um, he said he wants the job, but he didn't give me a price, so I can't even tell you guys the price, but I'm not, you know, I hate coming here, but under the timeframe, to keep you guys informed what's going on, that's why I'm coming tonight. And he said he, actually, right now, they're, they're, they're trying to shut down that job, so they can close up that FEMA project, and then he'll go back to his office and write this up, so. I should have everything ready for you by the next council meeting.
So we're like in twenty thousand dollars?
I'm hoping less, and I told him also, "We're gonna try to do everything we can do," you know, as we're do, we've already got, we've been out there, the poles are already laying there. But you're getting this time of year, you know, you, we've already got a foot of frost, you know? I busted sticks off, you know, pounding sticks in out there, but then it went out, and now it's back in.
But he would come in and put the temporaries up, and put the permanent ones up, too?
Right, right.
Twenty-nine?
When you're talking...
There's twenty-three poles.
When you're talking temporary, though, Bill, I mean, it is not a different type of construction, it's, it's still permanent-type construction, right?
It could be permanent, it's built exactly the same, but temporary means... They're only gonna be there temporarily. The blue ones, once, you know, if you had that house, or you wouldn't want them poles here either, you know, they're not, they don't just feed Mark, they feed everybody, so, yeah, when I'm talking temporary, the poles will be built exactly the same.
Right.
And I told Mark, I said, "Mark, I'm gonna be rocking the hard lights, this is the only place I can go." I tried to even go on this side of the road, he says, "No, we don't want you over there. You know, just come across here, and go up." They're gonna move up, there's gonna be a lot of...
That's a lot of dirt.
A lot of areas gonna be moved in this area here.
That's good, when you're talking ten feet, that's good, yeah.
And forget how many feet they're taking off that hill, or, just so they...
He's taking ten feet off this intersection.
Yeah.
And he doesn't want the, and I don't blame him either, 'cause if I tell a contractor to go fourteen feet deep, and he bores through eight feet deep, and they hit that wire, you know, and then you got troubles, so. But the nicest thing, there's only two, four, or five poles, you know, that's temporary of the job, but we already cut these trees down here, we had to cut three trees down.
Well, I'd like to get some hard numbers, I wanna...
But that's what I was looking at, you know, once you get, if you got a guy here, some of them's got to ten thousand bucks for mobilization, you know? And I, you know, I got bids for our last time, so I know about what a pole cost and to frame and...
So do we do diligence just for the fact that, let's say, this comes in higher than what we think? Do we have other contractors that we could just see what's go, I mean, just have a plan B?
Yeah, the last contractor we had, Whitey, was from Custer, South Dakota.
Yeah, I don't, like I said...
I don't know if he's gonna come, I'll call him, of course, but, yeah, I got a bid or something.
Well, I'm not saying let's, what I'm saying is, let's see what the spin is gonna be, but let's also be the fact that if it, and if it's such a thing that it is, if he's the only guy talented, that might be, sounds good for us, but it might be that, well...
Yeah, I can call, I can call Kynes up and...
Just, just give, get a ballpark for him.
This is big enough, we can't do this, you won't get anything else.
I thought about it, and I dropped the poles off, and then I gotta get, I promised Dollar General have power to them in two weeks, so that's what we're actually working on right now, and a few bands been up there, we actually had to move, we're moving dirt so we can work back there, but, and it's pros.
Phone calls doesn't take that long.
Oh, no, no, I blew it.
This is just FYI, we're stuck paying for it.
I'm just trying to keep the, it's such a, it's such a short timeframe, and it just so happens, he's here, if he wasn't here, then I would've had to just, you know, do the standard going out for bids and...
But we can't avoid this, we gotta move them.
Oh, you got no choice, yeah.
That's, that's not the issue.
Yeah.
The route I'm trying to do is the cheapest while there's somebody here.
That's fine.
Where, you know, the guys are already in the hotels in SAC City, and, but no, I will, that'll all be checked on, and that'll be, well, it's gotta be ready by the next council meeting, 'cause then you're into Christmas, you know?
Ho, ho, ho.
Yeah. And they did bid our last job.
Okay.
Yep.
And these guys know what they're doing, they're not, how fast?
They just did Calhoun under the FEMA project. Where are they from? Old Ridge, Nebraska. I don't even know where that's at, but...
It's an IES company, but, uh...
I don't, it's gotta be a terrible, but I don't know if it's part of them or not.
Yeah.
I can show you this.
Well, you don't. I'll move this up, but yeah, I could, I could say it's out of the way, yeah, I don't know.
Right, there's IES, and that's what they bid per pole, it's got everybody's on there. That's Scott, when we did that line by Mark Weber's and it's south of town, too. That was our last project before our Shune Construction.
Okay.
Project. And Shune actually, you see there, Shune actually got that bid, too, but...
Will we have Shune come back and do the underground?
Probably.
Seven hundred and seventy-three.
Yeah. So we...
That's us, we provide all materials for that.
Yeah.
You know, gives you an idea, but, you know, I hate to say anything, because you don't, you don't know how bad they want the job, you know?
That's, so that, like I said, competition.
But Kynes called me back the next year after he worked for us, he goes, "You got any more work for us?" Well, we didn't, 'cause we did an underground project, you know, that year.
So we'll just wait?
And things, go down here to Dollar General if you wanna see things move fast. You know, that building, you'll see that building up here pretty soon.
I figured, the frame was all there.
They've had a lot of experience.
He comes in our, he comes in our trucks, building, building in a box, so...
Whether it's four or five, so I said it one morning when I went out, you know, at six-thirty, to, with the VAS.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, appreciate it, Bill, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Hometown Pride Program.
Just really the issue here being, now that we would need to have a steering committee member, the, just that all the communities are on board with the Hometown Pride Program. This would be one of the, one of the next things, is to get a steering committee together, so it'd be a member from each of the communities and a member from SAC County, and then they would work towards the, through the procedures to get everything set up and get into the contract with Keep Iowa Beautiful. But then, one of the main things that the steering committee gets to do, though, is to hire that, that community coach. So we would need to provide, you know, identify somebody willing to serve on the steering committee, and it would be good to have the city officially appoint that person.
Anybody wanna volunteer?
When's the meetings?
But I would volunteer if somebody...
You're gonna volunteer?
Yeah. Somebody'll have to move that, though.
Well, I...
Well, I second that.
I'll turn it. Gus, you got anything to say about that?
I, I heard nothing.
I'll make a motion, we volunteered the mayor for that position.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, Woltman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a public works report?
No, not really, he's, uh...
Busy.
No, we were talking about what he's gonna do this weekend, he is going to get to a lot of that sewer cleaning yet, he's gonna clean some of those sewer trouble spots that we know of, and while the weather's decent yet this week, we're going to get those trouble spots cleaned.
It's gonna be pretty good this week.
So that was one of his big things to accomplish this week, so, other than that, we're, we're good.
Okay, city administrator report.
Yes, if we can take a look at this thing from the CTS, I'll give you one there. So Werches was in, they tore out that bathhouse, this is something new you wouldn't have yet, Gus.
Okay.
But Werches was in, they tore out the bathhouse, and as they're, as they're tearing that out, they're really taking a look at, at subgrade, and just that it's really loose, and Lon was real concerned about that, as far as having any good compaction there, you know, that whole campground area is a dredge spoil site, and there was some, some looser fill material that that, that old bathhouse was built on. So I had CTS come down today, and they did not give us a full-blown soil study, but we did want them to come down and at least view it and give some of their recommendations about what we should do. And, you know, long story short, as they do, they say that it's pretty loose down there, you need to get a better subgrade underneath there, they would recommend about two-foot removal and replacement with, with better material. And talking with our, with our architect about that, they would likely be leaning that way, too, whether it's removing and replacing with, with material, or the other option is thickening that slab even more, which they may consider that, though, too, but, you know, the slab's sixteen inches already. Not much is really needed, but, um, I guess if you, it's the old adage, but we wanna build on a solid base, so we wanna make sure that that's good before we, before we put our new building on it, but, that's just a little update, and not knowing exactly what the engineer's going to do yet, they have a structural guy who, they were referring this to, this, this document, and then they would come up with their recommendations from there. Uh, Park, just a part, a little bit of update on the Park Board meeting, which is held before this one, and it was really exclusively to discuss the plan again for Emerald Ashbore, and you'll be hearing from the Park Board when it comes budget time, they'll present you a different plan that essentially does still ask for some, some tree removal, but also asks that we start to prepare for being able to treat some trees. And they got a different treatment than what they had initially proposed as being so expensive, and, and the cost is down quite a bit, and they can look at, at treating some of the trees that are in good health, and in certain areas where you wanna make sure to keep some, if you want some kept by the lake, we could certainly, you know, treat those down there. But they'll be presenting their, their ideas on that, and the good part about the treatment is that you don't ever start treating trees until there's a positive ashbore confirmation within fifteen miles of Lakeview. is that you don't ever start treating trees until there's a positive, uh, ashbore confirmation within fifteen miles of Lakeview. And that's not that close yet, although it, it is in Boone.
Yeah.
Boone was the closest one, so, hopefully, it's still, you know, a few years, and during that few years, we're able to start save up, saving up some money so that we can, uh, continue with, uh, with the treatments then, which would, uh, be treating this tree every other year, which is the other big change, that it's not, not annually, it's every other year, with, using this triage, uh, is the name of the, of the product, so. They had real good luck with it.
So, they know how much of a cost, uh, per tree?
Yeah, it, yeah, Brent Huckenford prepared a lovely report against, really nice. And it was, I would tell you, six, sixty-some dollars per tree, huh?
Yeah.
That's a lot too, Brent, tearing one down.
Well, and it was.
You have to treat them every two years.
Every two years.
And that ain't so bad.
Nothing's for sure, though.
It was like forty-some dollars worth of, uh, uh, worth of this treatment, and, and then labor in order to get it done, but that's.
You have to be a certified guy to do it.
Yeah, we, I would assume we would get one of our employees certified and have them do it. Otherwise, you use contractor, the price goes sky high.
But you're not talking, uh, like, personal, like, for me?
Not private trees, no. There's, there's people out there who would do that.
Yeah.
Cost per tree is ninety-five bucks for a twenty-five, for a twenty-four inch.
Twenty-four incher.
Nine hundred bucks, tree.
And that, and that does include labor.
But we could develop a, a dachshund tree, if you have a tree on city property in front of your house, maybe they would pay for half the treatment, the city paid for half the treatment. That way, everybody's got a little desire to keep going.
At least now we got some sort of numbers that we can work with for budget time.
They will be presenting again, this would be a budget request.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
To start to incorporate some into, into next year's budget.
Cause you could, yeah. Hopefully, get some.
It's gonna be expensive fast.
Well, that's just.
Get rid of the squirrel, that'd help a lot.
They hollow them papers out, don't they? You gotta get together and, and have our fire meeting, our fire department meeting with the trustees.
Okay.
Who wanna, was wondering if next Monday would work for you, if we did everything on the eighth.
Is that after the community club meeting?
Yes.
Seven o'clock at the station normally?
Yeah. And that one's tough to Skype into. If, if we do that over at the, uh, fire station.
They got Skype over there?
Uh, I don't know that they do. Not, there's no internet connection there.
No, probably not.
That date, you know, does Jimmy got that date for the town street trustees?
Well, they're, they're planning it, they're meeting tonight too, I just wanna confirm with the three of you, we gotta have a quorum at least, so.
I, um, I went to it last year, I don't know.
Does the date work for you?
Yep.
Seven o'clock?
Let's plan on seven o'clock, um, on the eighth, regular council on the fifteenth, and then we have union bargaining scheduled for the twenty-second.
That's a Monday too?
That's a Monday, so, you know, every Monday for the, every Monday this month.
Okay. So, eighth, and then what's, uh, fourteen, fifteen?
Do you need me there next Monday?
For the fire?
What time is the meeting, seven o'clock at this fire station?
Yeah, seven o'clock at the fire station.
Every meeting, every Monday this month?
Yeah, except for the twenty-ninth, there won't be one, but.
Okay.
And the bargaining is the fifteenth?
Twenty-second.
Oh, you wouldn't miss that.
Are you sure?
Unbargaining, we are, uh, again, the twenty-second is the official exchange of proposals, but we would have their proposal several days ahead of time, because we get up to that two-week time to craft our response, so.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock. When I get their proposal, we'll be getting together to discuss what the city's response is gonna be.
Okay.
SAC County League, the city of Lakeview hosts the Christmas meeting, Wednesday, the tenth, out at Ryan's. And I hope that as many can attend as, as possible, and it's common that spouses would attend that if you, if your, uh, spouse is able to, and you're still out of town.
Nope, I'm, I gotta run the boards, the gal's gotta work nights, so I gotta work my own job, so.
All right.
I'll be there.
And that's the tenth?
Very good. I need to find somebody who can be an auctioneer for that evening.
Well, you should find.
Are you an auctioneer, Dave?
I have at a church fundraiser, but that's as far as.
That's about, that's about the same.
That's experience.
Stupid one, dude.
Chris Grody might.
Cause, uh, lots of times Shirley Phillips has done this for us, Shirley can't be there.
Oh, really?
She loves that.
Yep, she really enjoyed that, but she can't, she can't attend, so.
Well, yeah, can't we get like?
Dave Waltman?
That Dave Waltman.
Didn't have to be good, you just gotta be there.
Either that, or it's gonna become another duty of the hosting mayor.
Anything can happen Monday.
Wednesday.
What time does league meetings start, six?
Six-thirty, social time at six-thirty, and dinner's around seven. Then after seven, we do this auction, so, the mayor has graciously agreed to donate his, one of his chests again, that always goes over really well. And, for this week, Northwest Iowa League is having a Christmas meeting, and that is this Thursday. It's at Denny's in Cherokee, social hour there starts at five, and then dinner's at six. Anybody able to make it to a five o'clock, or a six o'clock meeting in Cherokee?
I'll be going, I'll try to make it back, 'cause I, I'm going to Maquette Old Town, I'm trying to city, I'll be back probably about noon on Thursday. What is this?
Northwest Iowa League, it's Thursday.
On Thursday, huh?
It's on Thursday.
I'll tell you about takeoff.
Four?
Yeah, I'll try to fly, I'll fly on it unless you hear a different.
Okay.
Get hung up someplace.
I'm, I'm absolutely gonna plan to attend, but it is, uh, state drill team competition in Deming.
That's right.
So, I, I will, I will be coming back, but I won't be, I may not be back by the time you guys leave, I'll just meet you.
Well, we can drag our feet, so. I have a chest for that, too.
All right.
You want me to drive the pickup?
No, I can throw it in the back of the car, I got a smaller one.
Do you do the interior?
Yeah.
I just wanted to.
Cedar line. Other cedar line wallet. The one for the, Northwest Iowa League is pure cedar.
All right.
No, 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 this, it's made to laugh. Anything else, anybody else, or you can do adjourn?
It was done, it was done and concerned, agenda.
It's already done.
You're good. All right, I thought you were just staying.
No, that's, that's what they have for the first.
Yeah. Somebody move that, I missed it. Me adjourn. Yeah, second.
You're okay.
All right.